First of all, welcome to City Hall. It's just a smidge past six tonight. We have our January 21 meeting. Before we start the meeting and before we have our prayer, I want to tell you, obviously, we have a passing that we had here recently, and that was of Mayor Louise Gardner. As your mayor now, I'm honored to give several speeches, obviously, as you could imagine, ribbon cuttings. But one of the toughest things I had to do of late was to meet with Louise's family. Because as you can look at the ages there, or the years that Louise was mayor, she was mayor from eighty-seven to ninety-five. Well, eighty-seven, I was a year out of high school. Didn't know what I wanted to do in life. Never ever would have guessed that I would be here as a mayor. And Louise was the type of person that would, she would represent anyone, whether you voted, whether you had a job, no matter what you did in life, if you lived in Jefferson City, she was your mayor. And she will be missed by her family. Former Mayor Landwehr was able to go to the funeral home with me Sunday along with our first lady Darla and our oldest daughter Alyssa. And we were just both able to share with the family how much Louise meant to our city and how much she will be missed. And with that, I would just simply ask for you to have a moment of silence.
Next on our agenda, before we start our official meeting, I would call on Mr. Ken Hussey for tonight's prayer.
Yesterday being Martin Luther King Junior Day, I just wanted to start with one of my favorite quotes from him, which is, "If you can't fly, then run; if you can't run, then walk; if you can't walk, then crawl; but whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward." As we gather here tonight, I ask that we be mindful of those opportunities to serve our community and our citizens. I ask that we keep in mind the enduring values of Jefferson City, our state, our country, putting our efforts in those areas and into those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. We are certainly thankful for this day, its blessings, its opportunities, and also its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. Let us seek strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for its duties and for its problems. May we be challenged to give our best always to the citizens of our community, and let us continue to strive to make this a better world. Amen.
... to the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Bray just told me that it's approximately twenty-five degrees warmer than the last time we were here, so that's all good. Roll call, please.
Branch?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hussey?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Schulte?
Scrivner?
Here.
Turgeon?
Here.
And for the record, I know Sean was sick tonight, so I have an excused absence. Next, we'll move into public hearings. First, we have public hearing on Bill Twenty-Thirteen-One-Twenty-three. We could have reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending sections pertaining to authorized land uses, standards, parking, and definition in Chapter Thirty-Five, the zoning code.
Mr. Barron, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular bill proposes twenty-two separate amendments to the zoning code. All of these amendments were identified by planning division staff through the normal day-to-day operations and the plan review process, and also through discussions with developers and the public. Within your packet is both a one-page summary sheet of the amendments, followed by a three-page report that gives a little bit more of an analysis on each of the proposed amendments. I would say that in whole, these amendments are fairly minor in terms of their potential impact on development within Jefferson City. It's a long list of very minor amendments. And the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve all of the amendments at their meeting on December twelfth. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have prior to opening the public hearing.
Any questions of staff? Bob?
I guess, you said they're all minor amendments. Why did we do them?
It's a long series of amendments that have been identified by staff as items that need to be tweaked, make the zoning code more efficient, take any items that don't necessarily need to be there and remove them, things that, regulations that may not be accomplishing the goals that were envisioned when they were originally put there.
And did we consult with contractors and realtors in the community about this?
The list was prepared through the normal day-to-day conversations with them, so I would say yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of staff? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone here to speak in favor of Twenty-Thirteen-One-Twenty-three, please raise your hand. Seeing none, anyone to speak in opposition of Twenty-Thirteen-One-Twenty-three? Okay, the public part of that hearing will now be closed. Eric, do you have anything to add on One-Twenty-three?
No.
Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have a reading of Bill Twenty-Thirteen-One-Twenty-four.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri changing, amending, and modifying the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by modifying specific use standards for telecommunication facilities.
Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. This bill proposes an overhaul of the section of the zoning code relating to telecommunication facilities. This primarily involves cell towers, but also includes building-mounted cellular antennas. The proposed regulations were developed both off of a model ordinance as provided to the Planning Division by the Law Department, and also by reviewing telecommunication tower regulations in comparable cities in Missouri. Within your packet is a one-page summary that outlines some of the key concepts of the amendment. Planning and zoning commission voted unanimously to approve this amendment at their meeting of December twelfth, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have prior to the public hearing.
Bob? Do the existing towers meet these criteria?
Some of the major change within this amendment is to require towers that are greater than seventy feet in height to obtain a conditional use permit. There are some, I believe, that may not have that. But yes, there, a number of the towers within Jefferson City have conditional use permits, but probably don't meet all of the specific standards that are contained within the amendment. In the event that they are upgraded or any activity occurs at them, they would be required to upgrade to that level. But most of what I'm speaking of is fairly minor, such as having solid screen fencing enclosures around the base of the tower. For the most part, the existing towers, those that are out there, if an additional antenna is going to be added to them, the ordinance would certainly permit that.
So if you added a tenant, in other words, an additional transmitter to a tower, would that trigger the changes?
Possibly, and fairly minor. Again, it would be toward the base of the tower and screening it. Beyond that, most of the towers should conform to most of the regulations within it.
Okay. Any other questions by staff at this time? Seeing none at this point in time, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone to speak in favor of Twenty-Thirteen-One-Twenty-four? Anyone opposed to One-Twenty-three-One-Twenty-four? Yes, sir. Please come forward and, for the record, please state your name and address. And Drew, there's not a time limit, right? I've got it.
I will be brief. My name is Michael Chambers. I am the new Regional Director of External Affairs for AT&amp;T. I picked up the Jefferson City piece within my territory on January ninth, so I am a newcomer to all of you, and I hate to make my introduction this way, but here I am. Basically, AT&amp;T's office is located at 101 West High Street. I appreciate the city's effort and concern to create some good standards and procedures for citing wireless facilities. However, AT&amp;T does have some concerns. I would ask if the industry was consulted at all in the planning and zoning process. And again, my apologies, usually in the communities I follow, I try and follow the website quickly, but I missed the planning and zoning. I believe January sixth was when they officially approved it and had a hearing on, I think it was December twelfth. Based on just a very quick preliminary read that I have done and tried to get to some of our attorneys, one of the things that stood out, I think, the most was that there do seem to be some conflicts with state and federal law with the ordinance as it's written. And basically, what I'm here to ask for tonight is perhaps a continuance, I know you don't have to allow that, but a continuance, so that AT&amp;T's attorneys can share some of our concerns with city staff and city's legal, and just review them before we go a step further and get into an area that I don't think either of us would like to get into. One example deals primarily regarding wireless facilities on existing utility poles and requiring that all related equipment be located outside the right-of-way. That prohibition of being within the right-of-way would not be consistent with Missouri State Statute Sixty-seven-One-Eight-Three-Two. And like I said, I don't want to waste the council's time with going through all the statutes and issues tonight. I would just hope that the council would consider perhaps a continuance and the opportunity for AT&amp;T to give some of our positions and legal positions to the city before the ordinance was actually approved and enacted. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions of our guests? Drew, do you have any comments?
So there's no particular pressure on it, so I'm not opposed to continuing it and seeing what they have to say.
I guess this would show that Councilman Mahalovich is the sponsor.
We'll have to close the public hearing, though. You might want to make sure anyone else wants to speak.
Okay. Stay tuned. How about that?
And again, I apologize for this kind of an introduction, but I look forward to working with you all in the future. And again, I apologize for kind of a late arrival on it.
Did you have a question, Rick?
Yeah, had you tried to get ahold of city staff prior to tonight?
Actually, my first email was today, and it was to you. I don't know if you've been able to check your emails yet.
[laughter]
Because getting it added to my territory, and there were many more cities rather than just Jefferson City. I also picked up Lake the Ozarks, Oshage Beach. I was involved in a council Lake of the Governments week before last. Lake Ozark had some issues last week. I'm kind of scrambling to catch up, and as it happened, when I was checking on, trying to get your faces and names together for me, I chanced upon the agenda, which was on the website. That was over the weekend, and Monday, of course, your office was closed for Martin Luther King Day. So again, I apologize for the late notice, but would appreciate just the consideration and think it might be in the best interest of everyone just to kind of look at it. We will be expeditious in our response and work with staff. We will not delay it, that's for sure.
All right, thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak, was that in favor or against? What's that? Against? Anyone else here to speak against Twenty-Thirteen-One-Twenty-four? And we already did four, so the public part of that hearing would be closed at this point in time. Is there any discussion from council members and/or council sponsors? Rick?
I would go ahead, under the circumstances, to move for continuance.
Second.
Okay. Would that automatically move to the informal calendar in this case, or do we need to vote on it?
No, the sponsor can move it to the informal.
Okay, unless two or more?
It's six people, take it off.
Okay. Anyone have a problem with that? If not, we'll move it to the informal. Rick, thank you, and Carlos, thank you. All right, moving on to number five, I think that really speaks for itself. That's our minutes and reports filed here at City Hall. If you'd like to play a bigger role in your local government, you can do so by being on our boards and commissions, and you can do that by going to JeffCityMo.org, or you can call Gail Strope, our HR director. Next, we'll move into council committee reports, and first is Councilwoman Carrie Carroll in the Admin Committee. Carrie?
Thank you. Administration Committee did not meet in January, so I have nothing to report, other than our next meeting date is Wednesday, February fifth, at eight AM across the hall. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next, we have, filling in for the Finance Committee Chair who's out today, sick, Mr. Bill Betts. Bill, thanks for being here.
Yep, no problem. The next meeting for the Finance Committee is January twenty-eighth. That'll be across the hall in the Boom Bancroft Room at seven-thirty. Agenda items are the financial reports and conference center funding updates. There's going to be some new items that we've not discussed before, but we're going to discuss the SIP and vacancy savings list, what those are, and we're also going to discuss purchasing code revisions. Mr. Schulte also asked me to update everyone on the sales tax receipts for the first month of the new fiscal year, and that is, they were down twenty-three thousand, six hundred and three dollars over our projections, and our projections are exactly what January two thousand and thirteen receipts were. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Bill? Bill, thanks for filling in tonight in Sean's absence. Next, we have a Public Safety Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Bob Scrivner. Oh, I'm sorry, Rick Prather.
It's okay. Our Public Safety Meeting, the next meeting will be held Thursday, January thirtieth, across the hall after the Brown Bagel.
All right, thank you, Rick. Next, we'll talk to Bob Scrivner about public works and planning. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works and Planning has not met since our last council meeting. Our next meeting will be this Thursday, January twenty-third, at seven-thirty AM across the hall. We've got a rather long list of items on the agenda, so I'm not going to read them, but I do, I am going to mention that I know it is of interest to a number of people in the community, the status of our transportation study group, if you will, and just wanted to assure everyone that that's not something that's totally fallen through the cracks. It is on our to-do list, and is something that we will be taking up as we clear some of the other major items off the agenda, such as a conference center and administrator, new administrator selection, and some of the other things that are kind of pressing at the moment.
Bob, I want to thank you. I know, we spoke the other day to some of that leadership, and appreciate what you have to say.
Thank you.
As far as liaison committees, I believe Tina with Parks and Rec has a report, is that correct? Tina?
Yes, Mr. Schulte, in his absence, asked me to report on our commission meeting a couple weeks ago. The commission did review our enterprise report, which was for this past year, and that includes the operations of the Ice Arena Golf Course, Memorial Park, Family Aquatic Center, Ellis Porter Pool, and the concession and recreation programs. It was a report that we handed out to the commission. We also discussed, it's handed out a report, on the pre-audit fund balance report and the outlook for the next ten years. And, excuse me, we also, the commission also accepted a proposal for our water slide rehabilitation project at Memorial Pool. Those slides are in fairly poor shape, and we have had a company that's going to come in and rehab them, and Sean did want to show a few slides of that, what's going to happen with the pool. This is the condition of the slides out at the pool today. Just shows the rough spots, and this is the company that's going to come in, they'll come in and sand down all the rough spots and seams of the pool. And then this is what the finished product will look like when they're finished. So we've got a good reputation, and they, Safe Slide Restoration will be the company that will be handling that rehab. Next, Sean wanted us to talk about the, the commission has authorized us to go ahead and give the county some money to widen the portion of the greenway that they're doing some rehab out on Highway Fifty West on the north side of the road. There's a section between South Country Club and Pioneer Trail that the original project was just going to be a five-foot wide trail, a greenway trail, and the rest of it's going to be eight-foot. They wanted us to go ahead and pitch in a little bit of money to extend that, to make it all eight-foot, that whole length from the Country Club all the way to Bender Park entrance, and we have agreed to do that. Commission also continues work with the designers for the multipurpose building, and we have, staff has come up with a program that other Parks and Recreation Departments are doing across the state. It's called Friends of the Park, and here's a, we have a brochure, anybody can sign up to be a friend of the park, and as a friend of the park, you'll receive emails and newsletters of things that we have going on, legislation that may impact the Parks and Recreation Department. You'll get a decal to put on your car window, and then also your, the introductory, two friends of the park, you'll get a free pass to either the golf course, pool, or the Ice Arena. And then we'll just, we'll be sending out emails just occasionally, probably once a month or once every couple months, we'll send out emails to anybody that is a friend of the park. And if anybody's interested, we do have brochures here to share.
Any questions for Tina? Carrie?
Tina, is the link on the city's website for Friends of the Park?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Tina? Tina, thanks for being here tonight in Bill's absence, we appreciate it. See, I have next here Historic Preservation, Mr. Larry Henry. Larry?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Historic Preservation Commission met this, a week ago, this past Tuesday, January fourteenth, some of the topics of discussion. They did election of officers, they discussed, there was discussion about a few community awards and some candidates for those, also demolition applications, and then also how the commission can get involved with the Spanish-American War Memorial. That was a big topic of discussion, and I think that's kind of been tabled for now. But the next meeting will be February eleventh at six-thirty.
All right, thank you, Larry. Any other liaison reports tonight to bring before the group? Bob?
You use the term "get involved," to, what is their intention, Larry? Do you, have they, have they came to a?
Well, and that's what's being tabled right now.
Okay, all right.
Any other liaison reports? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to presentations from the gallery, and we have a presentation from an invited guest, Ms. Carol David. Is that correct pronunciation? Carol, welcome.
Mayor and members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to give you a brief overview of the work of the Environmental Quality Commission. My name is Carol David, and I'm currently the commission chair, and I've served, I think, for about six or seven years on the commission. Some of you may be very familiar with this commission, others perhaps not. I'll provide some brief information for you about the purpose of the commission and our, and some of our recent activities and current and ongoing ones. The commission was created by ordinance in nineteen-seventy-one, and the EQC, as we call it, serves the city by reviewing issues and planning initiatives that pertain to solid and sanitary waste, air quality, water quality, signage, greenways, and livable streets. These are all essential issues to our quality of life and our economic stability. The EQC consists of seven city residents, and two of our commission members are here today, I'd like to recognize them, Mr. Gary Wheeler and Mr. Joe Winkelman, a member of the city's Parks and Recreation Commission, a member of the city's Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission members are volunteers of diverse backgrounds, and they're dedicated to serving our city. I'd also like to mention that Councilman Henry is our council liaison, and we're very pleased to have his insights and his participation in our meetings. Some of our activities in recent years have included helping coordinate single-stream recycling implementation. We also serve as the Livable Streets Advisory Board. We have, in recent years, reviewed and advised on sidewalk improvement plans, city beautification and tree planting plans, and helped promote the environmental initiatives of other entities in the city, including Lincoln University. And I'd also like to say that, of course, we are working in advisement to city staff, and we work closely with Janice McMillan and Lauren Henry, and I would like to commend them for their outstanding service to the committee. It's really a pleasure to work with them. They're consistently professional, incredibly hardworking, and dedicated. Some of our continuing activities and things that we'll be doing in the near future, we are advising on sidewalk replacement and expansion, advising on bicycle routes, and most recently and forthcoming, we will be helping provide guidance to the Make Your Mark educational campaign. This is intended to expand knowledge in the community about the city's environmental sustainability initiatives. This is a work in progress, but the campaign provides a visible identity through which to promote many of the city's environmental and livability issues that are already in place. It provides sort of a brand to help citizens identify with these various initiatives. So the purpose of this public education campaign is to promote the many sustainability initiatives that are already underway in the city, that are making the community a better place to live and in which to do business. And these initiatives include things I've already mentioned, single-stream recycling, greenways, and city beautification projects, pedestrian and bike-friendly streets, and stormwater quality improvements. And the campaign will also provide guidance to citizens on how they can be more involved in these programs and be recognized for their efforts. I think we hear a lot of definitions about what sustainability is. This is the one I particularly like. Sustainability is simply meeting the needs of the present generation without compromising those of the next. And our commission is at the service of city council to review and recommend any issues that pertain to sustainability, environmental quality. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and again, we look forward to reviewing any initiatives that you would like us to review. Any questions?
Any questions for our guests tonight? Ralph?
Carol, thank you for being here tonight. Could you expand on the advising on sidewalk repair and replacement?
Well, in concert with city staff, we have, we were asked, we were tasked with reviewing portions of sidewalks throughout the city that either needed to be replaced or where there were no sidewalks. And so we looked at a variety of factors to help us decide and prioritize which areas we thought were the best. So we added our layer of advisement to this plan, which also needed to look at many other factors. So things that we looked at were proximity to schools, proximity to grocery stores, essential places where people needed a safe way to walk. Not everybody has a car. We want to live in a community where children can walk to school safely. These are things I think we all agree upon. So those are some of the criteria that we looked at. So we were adding our layer of expertise and review to the process.
And eventually, we would probably have a package and request financing for, to make those repairs and replacements, it sounds like?
I'd like to turn your question to Janice, because I'm afraid I'm not familiar with the exact process within city staff of how that works. the exact process within city staff of how that works.
Sounds like, uh, something good going, I just have a little more question.
Yes, as, as part of our sidewalk plan, um, we asked the Environmental Quality Commission to weigh in on prioritizing sections or areas where sidewalks were needed. And so, uh, Ms. David explained some of the criteria they used in, in prioritizing those areas. So, that work would be available to the council as you're looking at, at, uh, areas to promote for, uh, sidewalk programs with city funds, either CIP funds or, uh, grant funds.
I look forward to helping out any way I can.
Any other questions? Bob?
You mentioned Make Your Mark, is that a national program? Is that something that you developed or your Commission developed or...?
Well, i- in concert with city staff, it's a Jefferson City, um, it's unique to Jefferson City, the, the name of the, of the Public Ed- Education Campaign.
Okay.
For, for example, there are, there are lot, there's lots of great information about, for example, um, you know, informing citizens about proper use of, you know, proper use of the sanitary sewer system, or recycling, or, you know, green, lots of different information. This, this is one way to help sort of brand or, an umbrella to help people, um, learn about these initiatives. I mean, so many cities have a way for people to quickly access, oh, well, what's going on with environmental issues in my city? And so, this is a way to simply help citizens, um, find out in a more streamlined fashion what's already happening and what may happen in the future.
And how, uh, what method are you using to communicate this and to educate? Is it, is it through, like, Speakers Bureau or, I guess I, this is something new to me, I hadn't heard of this before.
Well, we're currently developing different strategies and action items of the plan, but for example, um, the city's website, you can have a more visible portal, perhaps on the homepage or some area on the website, through which people can find, you know, instead of going to this page for one initiative and this page for something else, they can... So, website, yes, Speakers Bureau, printed information, um, there are a variety of ways that this information can be disseminated.
So, it's still a, a work in progress?
It's a work in progress, yes.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Larry, I think you had your hand up?
This not, this is not a question, but Carol, I just wanted to thank you for coming out tonight, and also thank you and the rest of the Commission for the work that you guys do. Um, it's a pleasure for me to, uh, serve as liaison for that Commission, and I look forward to all the, the bigger and better things that, uh, you guys have coming around, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman, I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. Uh, next we have under B, uh, if we could get, uh, Judge Cotton Walker to please come forward. Well, Judge, this is kind of a change of routine.
It's a different view for me, Judge, uh, Mayor, yes, thank you.
Welcome, sir, tell us why you're here.
Thank you for inviting me and, uh, Council. And Tim Duncan, if you would come on up with me for just a moment, um, I'm gonna talk and I have Tim stand here so we can, uh, so we can eyeball him. Now, uh, to, to properly thank Mr. Duncan, uh, you know, the municipal court here in Jefferson City, we handle between eleven thousand and twelve thousand cases per year, not including parking violations, which, uh, our clerks do a great job of helping out. One of the programs that we have is we have choices with, if you will, alternate sentencing, is to do community service. And in, in Cole County, we have an agency that administers many hours of community service through, uh, different public groups. Some go back to the city, some go to other organizations, charities, and what have you, through CACSA here in town, Capital Area Community Service Agency. But CACSA is funded by defendants and, and by those who, uh, have the pleasure, if you will, of, of, uh, contributing community service to our community, either through alternate sentencing or sometimes to work off their debt to society, including their debt to the city. And so, working with the, uh, Mr. Smith and the parking staff and the City Administrator's Office, the City Attorney's Office, uh, I came up with a plan to have some of the community service, especially for those poor citizens who cannot afford the, even the hundred-dollar, uh, fee for Capital Area Community Service, um, but otherwise have the time, because they're either unemployed or, uh, perhaps disabled in some minor fashion, have the ability to contribute community service to the city. Uh, but there was one element that we had to have, uh, to figure out the, the process. So, so the, the program is basically, every Wednesday morning at six-thirty in the morning, uh, offenders who qualify by basically being nonviolent offenders, non-recent offenders, but still have, uh, debt to the city they owe, usually in the form of old fines and costs. Some of them even go back to old jail fines when the city was still paying the county for jail time, uh, for those offenders. And they have to report on Wednesday mornings, which is our court day, to the city parking garage, to Mr. Duncan, who then usually manages them in some fashion, usually at least hands them a garbage bag, and they help clean up the city. They help literally, uh, convert that parking garage from sometimes a place that gathers, uh, the bar crowd at one o'clock in the morning, uh, to the restaurant crowd, to downtown business crowd, to being ready for the business, uh, crowd the next day. Uh, of course, in the summer, we even have other events going on up there. And, uh, so Mr. Duncan has supervised dozens of, of our offenders, uh, from six-thirty to ten-thirty. They have to show up at six-thirty in the morning exactly. Mr. Duncan has, uh, developed his own, we kind of just found our way through the, the process over the last couple of years. Uh, he reports back to us who shows up on time. If they do not show up on time, he turns them away and reports to us, uh, that they, uh, that they were late and they did not, uh, show up on time. They get a four-hour shift, and for that, they get credit against their fines or their, uh, their, uh, debt back to the city. And again, without it and without, uh, Mr. Duncan, uh, some of those, if you will, would continue to, uh, have problems paying their fines here, they'd clog up our system here, and the city would not get that benefit of, uh, having them clean up High Street, Madison Street, Monroe Street, and obviously the parking garage. So, in talking with the City Administrator's Office, I, uh, asked that, uh, Mr. Duncan be recognized at a city council meeting, and though I believe he may have already gotten one, uh, the City Administrator's Office gave me a city coin to present to Mr. Duncan as a way of thank you. Thank you very much for your work in supervising that program, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you very much.
Tim, thanks a lot, I appreciate it, and, uh, Cotton, thanks for what you're doing for our community. Uh, next, uh, no announcements at this point in time unless there's any announcements by council members. Seeing none, we'll move into, uh, presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions. We were asked earlier at our pre-meeting if, uh, Reverend W.T. Edmondson could be moved, uh, towards the front. Uh, W.T., uh, represents, uh, found, uh, the founding convention for Faith Voices of Jefferson City, and a W.T., welcome tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's a, it's a cold night, we didn't want you to have to wait any longer, so, uh, without ado, please tell us your, uh, name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is W.T. Edmondson, um, Associate Minister at Second Baptist Church and the President of Faith Voices for Jefferson City. I would like to say that, uh, first of all, I'd like to extend you an invitation, uh, to our founding convention on January twenty-third at seven PM at, uh, Quinn Chapel, uh, four-fifteen Lafayette Street. Uh, this group, Faith Voices for Jefferson City, is historic in this community. Uh, faith community, faith, uh, groups from all over the city have come together. We got started probably about three and a half to four years ago, uh, when a group out of Kansas City, Missouri, came to, uh, try to, basically to entertain the possibility of this taking place. And, uh, so I would say that we were a little bit ahead of Pope Francis when he talks about service. Uh, we are about service. And so, our desire is to not only talk about issues, we're also interested in bringing resolution to issues. And our desire is to partner with the city in any way we can. Uh, our job and our, uh, purpose is to serve. Our Savior tells us that we are, should be about service. There are many in this community that are struggling in this economy, uh, don't have jobs, don't have health care, uh, and so, don't have transportation to those places that they need to get to. So, we are here to be of service, to assist in any way we can. And so, we would like to have, uh, members of the city council, uh, to come, this is, will be a celebration. And so, we hope that you will come and be with us, uh, and anytime that we have an opportunity to assist you, uh, please feel free to call on us to do that. Uh, and with that, I will, uh, Mr. Mayor, take advantage of, of, uh, the nice weather outside and, and part. Thank you.
W.T., thank you, have a, have a good time, uh, this week. Uh, next we have on our agenda, the consent agenda, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to approve. Still moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Rick and seconded by Larry, uh, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next we have bids over fifty thousand dollars. Drew, on a, uh, on a, it's not very often we have these, is it a motion to?
On the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, on bids over.
Oh, I'm sorry, same, yes.
Okay, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to look at bid twenty-one-four. Still moved? Is it seconded?
Seconded.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Um, discussion by staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What you have before you is, um, uh, we've been fortunate, the police department have been authorized to purchase vehicles on an annual basis. This represents, uh, the purchase of nine patrol cars at a total price of two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. As you can see, um, Finance Department solicited, um, bids from ten central Missouri, um, dealerships, I think one in the Saint Louis area and two in the Kansas City area. The, my keyhole bid that we are recommending represents the lowest, um, of the two bids that we received, um, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief? Anybody want a free ride? Sorry. Uh, any debate by council? Seeing none, all in favor, um, we'll have a real call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussy?
Aye.
Mahalovich? Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgen?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes, next we'll go on to, yes, sir?
Uh, this is for Chief. Uh, Chief, could you give us an update, since we're talking about, uh, vehicles, an update on the SWAT, uh, vehicle that we had authorized for purchase, and when that might be in or just progress?
Uh, thank you for asking. We, we have possession of, we call the Bearcat, which is, uh, for use by our SWAT team. Uh, we sent, I think, three officers to the east, I can't remember the state, Pennsylvania or someplace back east, uh, to do an inspection and to be trained initially. We then brought that vehicle to, to our jurisdiction. Uh, we, we had put decals on it, uh, there's no painting or anything involved, and then we trained, so our entire SWAT team has since been trained on the operation of the vehicle. It's pretty involved, and, uh, I hope you understand, we don't want to discuss a lot of the capabilities of that vehicle, um, but we also intend to, uh, train our supervisory group so that they have some orientation to the capabilities of that vehicle. I think, I've also been told, uh, our intelligence tells us that some of the law violators are aware of that vehicle and are not very happy, which of course makes us very happy, so, um, I express my appreciation to the council for that kind of support. The per- reason for the purchase was safety, safety of the community, safety of our officers, and, in a sense, safety of the suspects, um, because that provides us, uh, another alternative, um, to the force that we otherwise might be required to use, so, thank you.
All right, thanks, Chief. Uh, moving on to, uh, bills introduced, first reading of bill twenty-thirteen, one-twenty-nine.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Outdoor Warning Consulting LLC.
And I understand there's a, uh, there could be a motion to suspend, uh, Councilman Prather.
I'd like to suspend the rules for this motion.
Okay, anyone have a problem with that? Uh, seconded by, uh, Councilman Branch, with that we have third reading, correct? Uh, third reading, please.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Outdoor Warning Consulting LLC.
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, as, as we recall, last fall, we had, I guess, a pretty severe thunderstorm move through the area, and two of our outdoor warning sirens were destroyed by lightning. Uh, we had to wait a period of time, um, while, um, our insurer determined whether that was gonna be considered two claims or one claim. Fortunately for the city, they considered it a single claim, which means, uh, that we are only required to pay the one ten-thousand-dollar deductible, rather than two ten-thousand-dollar deductible, um, payments, if you will. And so, we want to beat the primary tornado season, get the ball rolling, of course, we are prepared for tornado twelve months out of the year, as we all know, that can happen. But, uh, March to June is the, uh, time when more tornadoes occur than other times of the year, so, that is the, uh, reason for suspension of the rules. And, um, I think, working our way back, uh, we have to have a purchase order for the process to begin, and to have, to do that, we have to have a contract, and so, that's the reason we come before the council and request a suspension of the rules so the process can begin and we can get those repaired.
Tim, uh, I think we talked about this at a pre-meeting, any questions, uh, by the council staff? Ralph?
Chief, excuse me, these were damaged by lightning, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Lightning's not unusual occurrence, is, uh, is this something that's, I know you can't predict the weather or the future, but is this something that we're gonna have from time to time?
I, I suggest I might, uh, share with the council a memorandum submitted to me by Lieutenant Danf. We did our research and our due diligence, um, and consulted with the Outdoor Warning Consulting LLC and their representative, Steve Sirlock. I was asking that very question, is this something we should, um, prepare for on an annual basis? And I don't think people like to be read to, uh, I, I hate to read, it's a full page, contained within that, though, are basically statements from Mr. Sirlock that says, uh, we've done this for years and years and years across our great country, and this has never happened before. And we have no re- no, um, no clue as to why it happened this time in Jefferson City. It also, he also states that the installation of these sirens are the same as all those many others across our country, nothing varied, nothing deviated. There's just simply no reason for this to have occurred, and, and, and I don't know what to tell the council other than, you know, we hope this is one of those very strange, unexplainable exceptions to a very broad rule that seems to apply to everybody except us. And, uh, I, I will say that, you know, the one recommendation he makes is to look into additional protection by contacting a grounding specialist. Of course, that will cost money, so we're now in the process of identifying a grounding specialist and receiving a cost estimate that we would bring to the council, or at least, you know, confer with you as to what you'd like us to do. On its face, we shouldn't need this, but that was Steve's only suggestion.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Colonel?
I guess, Chief, uh, do we have a timeframe on those repairs, or is it just after they get into it and start digging to see what's actually damaged?
Well, Steve actually took us at our word, and he's kind of begun the process, uh, expecting, um, the council to act and, and to proceed, so we're kind of down the road already, uh, thanks to Steve and his trust in us. Uh, an exact time, I don't know, but I will say he's very much aware of, of our concerns, he has those same concerns, so we're gonna do it as quickly as we possibly can.
Thank you, Chief.
And, uh, Rick Mahalovich had a question too.
Chief, I'd be, uh, looking at, um, I'd, I'd really like to find ways that we can help you out better in, uh, terms of, uh, being able to repair these in a more expedient fashion. We're six months out from three, two sirens not working, so if there's any way we can speed, help you, uh, along that process, uh, let us, uh, let us know.
I think this would be a good time to defer to Jeremy. Mr. Culver did all the work, really, and he's fully aware of the difficulties he had. Maybe he would want to address... Maybe he would want to address some of the, some of those hurdles or hoops, and maybe there's just nothing more that could have been done. I don't know.
I would recognize it did take a while to get to this point. There were some issues with the insurance and getting them to consider it as one claim and that sort of thing. However, that is why we did ask for a suspension of the rules. At this point, is actually, I believe the parts are supposed to be in at the end of this month, and so as soon as the parts get in, I believe Mr. Sirlock has said that they'd be able to do the work where they're permitting in a pretty quick fashion. So I think this is why we're at this point now, and it'll move pretty quick from here on out.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Debate by council? Seeing none, real call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Prather? Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Turgeon?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll have first reading of 2013-130.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 9.55 acres from CO Office Commercial to C2 General Commercial for land addressed as 1125 Madison Street, described as part of Outlots 77 and 29 and adjacent right-of-way in Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to orient you to the location of this request. Up on the screen is a location map. To orient you, Stadium Boulevard is toward the bottom of the screen. Then you'll see Madison Street going through the middle of the screen. The area highlighted in yellow is the existing Capital Region Medical Center bordered by Madison Street to the west, Monroe Street to the east, Woodlawn Avenue to the north, and then Stadium Boulevard to the south. Capital Region Medical Center has acquired a significant amount of property to the north of Woodlawn Avenue, and that area is highlighted in blue. The purpose of the acquisition of this property is to make room for an expansion of the hospital. That expansion would also involve the vacating of Woodlawn Avenue, which has been presented to the council before. And there's a development agreement in place for the vacation of that street. The, this bill proposes to rezone the existing Capital Region Medical Center, which is the area that is, is identified here in yellow. The existing hospital facility is zoned CO Office Commercial, and the property that they had acquired across Woodlawn Avenue is zoned C2, which is a general commercial zoning district. The boundary between the two districts is the center line of Woodlawn Avenue, so Woodlawn Avenue is half-zoned C2 and half-zoned CO. This bill would rezone the CO portion of the property to C2, and then also the, the Woodlawn Avenue right-of-way in order to match the C2 zoning north of Woodlawn and clear the, the way from a zoning perspective for the expansion of their hospital. There are also portions of CO zoning on Madison Street and Highway 54. You'll see that the CO zoning district, this is the boundary that goes into the Highway 54 right-of-way and also along Madison Street. We've included that in the bill in order to prevent there being any remnant pieces of CO zoning in the area, although it is just right-of-way. Within your packets are a number of different visuals showing the proposed hospital expansion. I have one that I'll put up on the screen. The view of this is, is essentially from Madison Street. Madison Street is, is the street right here toward the bottom of the view. And toward the top of the view is the existing hospital complex with parking garage out front. And then this area located here with the mouse, I'm pointing at with the mouse pointer, would be the hospital expansion with a two-story parking garage out front. Again, the bill is just for the rezoning, not specifically for the, the expansion, but the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at their meeting on January 9th, and it's scheduled for a public hearing at the February 3rd council meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Barron? All right, thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Next, we'll have first reading of 2013-131.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, levying and assessing a special tax bill against particular lots and tracts of land fronting and abutting the 1,200 and 1,300 blocks of Moreland Avenue in the city of Jefferson, Missouri for the improvement of said curb and sidewalk.
Matt?
Thank you. As Clark indicated, this, this bill would basically assess a tax bill, 11 properties along Moreland Avenue that were part of our petition project that occurred last year. As you may recall, the residents petitioned the city to improve the curb and gutter and sidewalk along that street. They agreed to pay $10 a front foot for those improvements. I think the overall bill was somewhere in the range of $140,000 for that project. These 11 tax bills amounted to just over $8,100 and would go and travel with the property.
Any questions for Matt on 131?
Matt, you say, you say $10 a foot?
$10 a front foot for their, so that's why each one's different if you were to look in the packet, just depending on the frontage of the street.
Because I thought I was seeing something like $25 a foot or something.
The new ordinance requires after this project, it was the last project at $10 a front foot. Any new ones would be $25.
So this is the last project? Got you.